This program is sponsored by Medical Arts Hearing Instruments, 52 West Street in Lemonster. Locally and authentically providing better hearing and quality of life since 1978.
Sign up to speak this evening is John DeChico.
Good evening, John DeChico, 193 North Main Street in Lemonster, of course. Good evening and thank you for this opportunity to address the council in person and in public. I'm here tonight to ask for your support of petition 3620. As all of you know, I sent an email to all of you outlining my concerns about this and my support for it and asking for your support and consideration of this petition which will amend an ordinance that basically has been in place for almost 30 years now. That, of course, as you all know, deals with the issue of the infrastructure of our wastewater sewer lines in the streets, along with the water lines that supply all ratepayers in the city of Lemonster, the property owners who have city water and city sewage available to them and pay rates for that. We all know that this document, this ordinance, this law, has been in effect, as I said, for almost 30 years. I'm sure that when your predecessors had this document presented to them at the time, they felt that it was the right direction to take this particular issue. I think 30 years later, hindsight being 20/20, of course, I think we now realize that maybe that wasn't the best direction. And we know that they were faced with a situation where the city had a very aging infrastructure when it comes to both disposal of waste and water supplying to the residents. This, obviously, they felt was the expeditious way to solve that problem. Rather than simply kicking the can down the road for the city, they kicked the can onto the public's and property owner's property and said, "It's yours." That isn't working, frankly. The costs associated with this type of situation are staggering. It's an unknown situation for people who are property owners and ratepayers. It's basically a ticking time bomb underneath all the city streets. No one knows when one or both of these systems are going to fail. And when that happens, under the present ordinance, the present rules, the ratepayers are on the hook for the entire cost. I honestly don't believe that was maybe their intention at the time, but that's the reality of what has happened. You now have this longstanding history, and we have a lot of empirical data, obviously, available to all of you, so that when the Legal Affairs Committee and the Public Service Committee reviews this suggestion of change for petitions, there's certainly lots of information that can be gleaned and worked with so that hopefully we can come up with a better -- you can come up with a better solution to this issue. I really feel that, you know, we have an open wound. They chose to put a Band-Aid on it when, in reality, it probably was in need of a tourniquet. And now there's time. Time is still on our side, time is on your side, to really take a deep dive into the information that's available. There's, again, there's certainly at least 25 years of data about how this has impacted our city, our residents, our ratepayers, and looking forward. As I commented and get a response from my ward council, my new ward councilor, Mr. Angelini, Councilor Angelini, who's worked very tirelessly in the past in his other roles to protect clean water and proper disposal of sewage. We all know the importance of having a reliable system in any community. It is a number-one concern for all residents. Clean drinking water, proper disposal of wastewater is paramount for any city to maintain its viability as an open situation where people are willing to move to this community knowing and having the confidence that those city services are maintained properly, are equitably funded, and the cost-sharing is equitable. Right now, that isn't happening.
John, I'm gonna have to stop you.
Okay.
It's seven o'clock, and we're gonna have to open a formal meeting.
I understand.
We will go back to the public forum.
Okay.
I've given you quite a bit of latitude.
I know, that's fine. I'm actually done, President. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, I would permit you a wrap-up if you wanted.
All right.
But we're gonna have to open our meeting.
I'll probably take that opportunity.
Okay?
Thank you.
So I'd ask the members of the council to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
And I'll call the roll for attendance, starting with Councilor Frida.
Present.
Councilor Dombrowski.
Present.
Councilor Shalaf Ozefer.
Present.
Councilor Feckley.
Present.
Councilor Angelini.
Present.
Councilor Arndinger.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
And I'll record myself as present. Does the Chairman of Records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the City Council meeting of January 27, 2020, and I find them to be in order and ask that they be placed on file.
Thank you very much. At this point, I'll --
And ask for recess.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Make a motion.
Okay, all in favor? We are in recess. I will resume the public forum. Mr. DeChico, if you'd like to wrap up your comments, please, please do.
Thank you, thank you very much. I would just like to say in closing that I ask you to go above and beyond on this particular issue in that I know that, again, there will be subcommittees that will meet on this subject. The normal procedure, of course, is for most of you to wait for their findings. I would ask you to do due diligence and go a little bit above and beyond on this particular issue because it impacts so many people in our community to actually make every effort possible to attend both of those subcommittee meetings so that you can hear directly from the reports out from the departments themselves, department heads, who, of course, will be giving their opinions on this situation, and any members of the public who are ratepayers who might want to also issue statements during that time. Thank you very much. I appreciate this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. DeChico. The next scheduled speaker is Jeffrey Nickel.
My name is Jeffrey Nickel. I'm from 51 Dobson Circle in Lemonster. I'm here tonight to request the council accept a petition to make Dobson Circle a city street. Dobson Circle is a Gregory Scotty development in Ward 1 that had its final house built over two years ago, and with no work to the streets being done since the developer has completed its final house. Currently, the plowing is done sometimes during the storm and sometimes at the end of the storm, leaving the streets unusable due to slick and icy conditions that could cause danger to the residents if the city's fire, EMS, or police department were needed. There is currently a hydrant at the end of the street. It's been unattended. The fire department has requested Mr. Scotty to repair it. It's been several months since that request has been made, and the hydrant is still out of service, which has been out of service for well over a year. So we request that the Dobson Circle and the Massapock Roads petitions be accepted by you guys, and thank you for your assistance.
Thank you, Mr. Nickel. Is there anyone else that would like to address the council in the public forum? A second time, does anyone else like to address the council in the public forum? In a third and final time, would anybody like to address the council in the public forum? I'll declare the public forum closed. We're back in session. First item is communications from the mayor, starting with C-50.
C-50. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $112,768 be made to the street resurfacing expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the Highway State Aid Reserve for Appropriation account.
C-50 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-50 has been given regular course. C-51.
C-51. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $250,000 to be made to the snow and ice expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C-51 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Thank you very much. C-51 is given regular course. C-52.
C-52. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Relative to the appropriation of $50,000 be made to the snow and ice overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund.
C-52 is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course.
Very well, C-52 is given regular course. C-53.
C-53. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request authorization to acquire by purchase, gift, and/or eminent domain a parcel of land located at 51 Lancaster Street, Lemonster, containing .435 acres, more or less, and being the premises described in a deed recorded with the Western North District Registry of Deeds in Book 8240, page 369, for general municipal purposes on such term and conditions as the mayor deems in the best interest of the city, and further to authorize the mayor to enter into any and all agreements and execute any and all instruments as may be necessary or convenient to effect said acquisition.
C-53 is referred to the Chairman of Property.
Yes, Mr. President. C-53, regular course, a public hearing scheduled for February 24 at 6:47 p.m.
Very well. Let me vote on that, right?
Yes.
All members of the council in favor of adopting the recommendation for a public hearing on February 24 at 6:47, recognizing the usual course? And that C-53 has been given regular course with a public hearing on 2:24 at 6:47 p.m.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could?
Yes.
Just this, this is for the purposes of the new police station.
Correct.
And it's timely. So I think we have a letter from Bill Mitchell. If there's anybody that has any questions between now and the next meeting, if you address them to Bill Mitchell so that you can get all your answers, all your questions answered, so that we can move forward with it.
That's a good suggestion. I noted that Mr. Mitchell's letter is pretty exhaustive and well-done, as he usually does, but that's a good point. If anybody does have any specific questions over and above what Mr. Mitchell has already presented, please get them to the city clerk. Mr. Councilor Angelini.
Mr. President, I did speak to the mayor on this petition, and obviously, just to give everybody a quick overview, it's the intent here is to tear the house down eventually to provide another means of egress for the police station, obviously, across the street being one way. So, and he did say we'd like to move on this rather quickly if we could, so.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Very well, thank you. The next communication from the mayor will eventually, if we suspend the rules, be C-54. This will first require a vote on the suspension of the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules on this petition, please recognize in the usual manner. All opposed? Okay, so that, the rules have been suspended by a vote of six to three, and I guess we can now formally give this communication a number, C-54. And I will ask you to read it, Madam Clerk.
C-54. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request that the City Council submit a request pursuant to Article 2, Section 8, Paragraph 1, Clause 1 of the Amendments of the Constitution, as amended by Article -- can you help me throw my numeral?
Oh, 39.
39. That State Senator Dean Tran and State Representative Natalie Higgins file special legislation with the General Court on behalf of the city seeking to exempt the positions of Police Chief and Police Captain from the Civil Service Law, General Law, Chapter 31, as follows: An act exempting the positions of Police Chief and Police Captain in the city of Lemonster from the Civil Service Law be enacted by the Senate and House of Representatives and General Court assembled by the authority of the same as follows. Section 1. The positions of Police Chief and Police Captain in the city of Lemonster shall be exempt from Chapter 31 of the General Laws. Section 2. This act shall take effect upon its passage.
C-54 is referred to the Chair of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the mayor's office, the police chief, and I'd like to get referrals from the various police unions. I think there's three of them.
Very good. Okay.
C-54 is given regular course with a referral to the mayor, the police chief, the Patrolmen's Union, the senior officers, the senior officers' union, and any other police union that's applicable, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We must, we'll now, yes, Councilor Frida.
Through the chair to the Chair of Legal Affairs. Could we also get some information on other communities as to what they do, whether they're in civil service or not, whether the captains are? We haven't had a captain for a long time, so.
I can.
To determine that?
I can try to do some independent research and get some information on that.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
We'll now move on to petitions. It's time with 3720.
37-20. The Botanist grant a special permit to operate a medical marijuana facility located at 1775 Lock Drive.
Petition 37-20 is referred to the Chair of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the mayor's office, the planning board, the building inspector, the zoning board of appeals, and the Director of the Health Department. I'd also ask you to poll my committee to see if they'd like to schedule a public hearing now or after we get some of these recommendations in.
I'll defer to Councilor Shalaf Ozefer. Do you have a prediction on that? Would you rather have a public hearing scheduled now or wait till we get some of these referrals back?
I think it probably makes sense to wait until we get referrals back so that we have more information to consider.
Okay, I'll check with Councilor Cormier.
I also agree with that. I mean, it just, I think, saves us time from, you know, trying to talk about, you know, or speculate what other departments might be saying, so I'm okay with waiting till we get something back before we.
All right, so hopefully, Mr. President, we get some referrals back by the next meeting, and we can schedule a public hearing.
Okay. Councilor Frida.
Through the chair of the Legal Affairs, do you? What referrals are we getting back from? This is apparently an attempt to change a name, and I don't know whether legally can be done or not.
Let me clarify, Councilor Frida, this is a brand-new petition.
Right.
This is not a name change. This is from scratch.
Okay, so we have no information to refer then?
We have an application.
Right.
That the Botanist has made for the special permit, but they're starting from the beginning. So all those referral agencies would have to provide us their position on the application as it's been presented to us.
Okay, so through the chair, right to you, as we did previously, will we be having all the principal office holders of the organization in for questioning?
Well, someone's gonna have to present their case.
Well, I think we had all the officers the last time.
Yeah, I think there's a, we got a road to hoe here. I'm not sure, as a matter of, on its face, that what they've presented to us in terms of who they are has been fully set forth. So that will be something that will probably be fleshed out in this at some point. But let's get this referred, and we'll start the process, and I think your points are well-taken. Anything else?
No.
Councilor Shalaf Ozefer.
Excuse me, this is just really housekeeping. On the agenda, the petition is 3720, but on the package of materials, I have 3620.
Okay, so 3720 is the correct identification.
3720 is correct. Okay, I'll change it on my materials. Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, 3720 has been given regular course with referrals to the mayor, the planning board, the building inspector, the zoning board of appeals, and the Director of Health. We'll move on now to 38-20. I'm sorry, Councilor Frida.
I'm still confused because the information that we got from this company, the host agreement is clearly from the old company that was here, was all the, can't even think of the name now.
They've signed a new host agreement with the mayor.
So they said, so the new one's not in the information they gave us?
It's in the packet.
The packet refers to Prime Wellness, not this one.
That I can't comment on, but I know that the host agreement that's in the packet is something that was newly obtained. That, of course, is the mayor's jurisdiction, not ours, but again.
That's my question. Are we dealing with Prime Wellness or are we dealing with a brand-new company?
We're dealing with a brand-new company, brand-new application. All of this will get flushed out as a part of the process. I mean, these are points that, of course, we follow up on, but those things are all part of the process of hearing this special permit application. Anything else? Councilor Dombrowski?
Yeah, Mr. President, just a point of order. I mean, this is an application for a special permit, so I would just caution all council members that, you know, a lot of these questions, a lot of this information we want to get, we need to get it in the special permit hearing process.
Correct.
You know, we really shouldn't be discussing too much of this outside of the hearing.
I understand. Anybody else? Okay, we'll move on to 38-20.
Elizabeth Wood, Planning Director. Petition to amend Section 22-34.2.1 by deleting 34.2 by 1, which includes, the FB District includes those areas designated as a floodway on the Lemonster, Massachusetts Flood Boundary and Floodway Map, the FB FM, Community Panel Numbers 250314-0001-0010, effective September 16, 1982, and all special flood hazard areas designated as either Zone A or Zone A-I through A-30 on the Lemonster, Massachusetts Flood Insurance Rate Map, the FIRM, Community Panel Numbers 250314-0001-0010, effective September 16, 1982, and Community Panel Number 250314-0003, amended April 3, 1989. And inserting its place, the Lemonster Flood Plane District is herein established as an overlay district. The district includes all special flood hazard areas designated on the city of Lemonster Flood Insurance Rate Map, FIRM, issued by the Federal Emergency Management Agency, FEMA, for the administration of the NFIP dated September 16, 1982, as Zone A, A-E, A-H, A-O, A-1-30, and A-99 in the FEMA Flood Boundary and Floodway Map dated September 16, 1982. Both maps, which indicate the 100-year regulatory flood plane, the exact boundaries of the district may be defined by the 100-year base flood evaluations shown on the FIRM and further defined by the Flood Insurance Study, FIS, report dated April 3, 1989. The FIRM Flood Boundary and Floodway Map and FIS Report are incorporated herein by reference and are in file with the town clerk, building official, and planning and development department, and by also amending Section 34.2.3.3.2 accordingly. NFIP, State Coordinator, MA Department of Conservation and Recreation, 251 Causeway Street, deleting Suite 500-700 and inserting 8th Floor, Boston, Mass., 02114-2104, and.
Petition 3820 is referred to the Chair of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the Conservation Commission, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, the building inspector, and the city engineer. I also, I believe we're gonna need to schedule a public hearing on this.
Yes.
And you think maybe we should, we ought to do that now?
You want to do it now? Sure. I would recommend then on February 24, 2020, at.
Why don't you?
How much space do you want to give that?
Who is the first one?
The first one? Five minutes?
Yeah.
At 6:40 p.m.
Okay, so regular course, Mr. President, with those referrals, and we'd request a public hearing on February 24, 2020, at 6:40 p.m.
Petition 38-20 is given regular course with referrals to the Conservation Commission, the planning board, the zoning board of appeals, the building inspector, and the city engineer. And we're gonna establish, or vote to establish, a public hearing on February 24 at 6:40 p.m. All those in favor of the public hearing, please recognize. All those opposed? Councilor Angelini, I saw your hand first.
Mr. President, with your permission, I have some written questions for the planning and development director. I'd like to present them to the clerk for copies and distribution to counselors.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Councilor Frida?
Some of those are probably gonna be one of my questions, but can we get the planning director to tell us, would he give us a map? Because there's gonna be people affected by this that don't know, and they're gonna need to know they're in a floodplain.
I would ask you, if you don't mind, to reduce that question and any other question you have for her in writing and get it to the city clerk. Any other councils have questions for the planning director? Please submit your questions to the city clerk so we can get a good referral back from her. Anything else on that? All right, 39-20.
Roger Brooks, DPW, Water and Sewer Manager. Request to amend Chapter 21, Article 3, Section 21-22.3 of the Lemonster City Ordinance as follows. See attached.
I'm gonna, I hate to do this to you, but I think for the public, we should have these all read into the record.
Sure.
So I'm gonna ask you to flip that over and read the, see the attached portion of that petition.
Be ordained by the City Council of the city of Lemonster as follows. Chapter 21, Article 3, Section 21-22.3 of the revised ordinances is hereby amended by adding the following rate provisions and by deleting the corresponding rates from prior years. It's in a table. It goes user class first, factor, unit, and then rate. So the first user class is residential. It includes low-strength industrial. As of March 1, 2020, the factor is metered water. The unit is 100 cubic feet, and the rate will be $4.56. The next user class is gonna be minimum sewer charge per quarter, and that would be a rate of $25. The next user class is Loonenburg. As of March 1, 2020, per intermunicipal agreement dated June 24, 1999, the factor is metered water. The unit is 100 cubic feet, and the rate is $5.18. And then out of city, as of March 1, 2020, is the next user class. Its factor is metered water. Its unit is 100 cubic feet. Its rate is $8.83. And then at the end, it says as of March 1, 2021, 997.
The petition 3920 is referred to the Chair of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral to the DPW, the Water Department, and the mayor. And I believe we're gonna need a public hearing on this as well, as it's an ordinance change.
Correct.
How much time do you want? A minute, two minutes?
Oh, we're gonna need probably, let's give that three minutes at least.
Three minutes. So I would recommend February 24, 2020, at 6:37 p.m.
3920 is given regular course with referrals to the DPW, the Water Department, and the mayor, and there's a suggested public hearing of 2:20, February 24, at 6:37. All those in favor of setting a hearing at that date and time, please recognize in the usual manner. Opposed?
Mr. President, if I may, should I make a motion now to add that table to the agenda next time?
Yes.
That's, I'll regret, I'll hear that.
I'd like to.
We have a second?
I'll make a motion to amend Chapter, to amend 40-20 to include the.
39-20.
Oh, sorry, 39-20, thank you, to include the table that was just read and the attachment.
If you want to make, if I have a suggestion, if you want to make that motion and block for 3920 and 4020, to make sure that the rates are part of the agenda.
I can do that.
Maybe that would be appropriate?
Sure.
Is that okay?
Absolutely.
Do you have a second from Councilor Shalaf Ozefer?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor of making the amendment to those two petitions on the agenda at the next meeting? If you so recognize, okay. Nine, nothing. Amendment. All right, that brings us to, yes, Councilor Shalaf Ozefer?
For those two public hearings, will Mr. Brooks be here to explain?
We could ask, we could request that he be here. It would be helpful.
Oh, I think so, absolutely. People will want to know why rates are going up.
I'll ask the city clerk.
Thank you.
To make sure he attends. Okay, that brings us to petition 40-20.
Petition 40-20. Roger Brooks, DPW, Water and Sewer Manager. Request to amend Chapter 21, Article 2, Section 21-11.1 of the Lemonster City Ordinance as follows. See attached. And the attached states, be ordained by the City Council of the city of Lemonster as follows. Chapter 21, Article 2, Section 21-11.1 of the revised ordinances entitled Water User ordinances entitled Water Use Rate Schedule is hereby amended by deleting the provision for metered rates within and outside the city and inserting in this place the following: Metered rates per unit, four units and over, effective March first, twenty-twenty; within city, four dollars per unit; outside the city, five dollars and three cents per unit. Metered rates per unit, four units and over, effective March first, twenty-twenty-one; within city, four dollars and fifteen cents per unit; outside the city, five dollars and eighteen cents per unit. And then on the bottom, there's a table, and it says Water Use Rate Schedule. The Water Use Rate Schedule for residential and industrial use shall be as follows, effective, there's no date, minimum water charge per quarter, five eighths inches meter, five eighths of a meter, twenty-five dollars, three fourths, inch per meter?
Yeah.
Twenty-five dollars, one inch per meter, thirty dollars, one point five inch per meter, thirty dollars, two inch per meter, thirty dollars, three inch per meter, thirty-five dollars, four inch per meter, thirty-five dollars, six inch per meter, forty-five dollars, eight inch per meter, forty-five dollars, and out-of-city, forty-five dollars.
Forty twenty is referred to the Chair of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course with a referral similar to the last petition to the D P W, the Water Department, and the mayor's office, and we need to schedule a public hearing. I'd suggest, consistent with the last public hearing, February twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty at six thirty-four P. M.
That's what I was going to say. Okay.
Read the tea leaves.
Yep. So, forty twenty is given regular course with referrals to the D P W, the Water Department, and the mayor, and we're proposing and establishing a hearing date on February twenty-fourth, twenty-fourth, excuse me, at six thirty-four P. M. All in favor of establishing that hearing date, please recognize in the usual manner. All those opposed? Hearing date is established for February twenty-fourth at six thirty-four P. M. If, if it's okay with the Chair of Ways and Means, I'm going to ask the clerk to take forty-one twenty through forty-nine twenty and block?
Fine. All right. Forty-one dash twenty. Adele Martin, renew the second-hand dealers license for cold storage antiques and collectibles located at six hundred and nine Main Street. Forty-two dash twenty. S and F Court, renew the second-hand dealers license for Sam and Friends located at seven-ten North Main Street. Forty-three dash twenty. Fred R. Tucsonot, renew the second-hand dealer license for Fred's Auction located at twenty-eight Spruce Street. Forty-four dash twenty. R C D C, Inc., renew the second-hand dealers license for Crown Jewelers located at twelve Lindell Ave. Forty-five dash twenty. Eco ATM LLC, renew the second-hand dealers license for Eco ATM located at eleven Jungle Road. Forty-six dash twenty. Eco ATM LLC, renew the second-hand dealers license for Eco ATM located at one hundred Commercial Road inside the mall of Whitneyfield. Forty-seven twenty. John Andre J. John, renew the second-hand dealers license for George's Fine Jewelers, Inc., located at two fifty-five North Street. Forty-eight dash twenty. John Andre J. John, renew the second-hand dealers license for House of Relics located at twelve ninety-two Main Street. Forty-nine dash twenty. Degon, Inc., renew the second-hand dealers license for Hanush Jewelers located at one hundred Commercial Road.
Petitions forty-one twenty through forty-nine twenty are referred and blocked to the Chair of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. Regular course, and we don't need referrals because we either have them or the city clerk's office has reached out for them, so we should have them by the next meeting.
Very well. Petitions forty-one dash twenty through forty-nine dash twenty are given regular course. Moving on to matters before the City Council, starting with the City of Leominster's financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President. We've been, we began the fiscal year on July one, twenty-nineteen, with nineteen million, eight hundred and ninety thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars and twenty-five cents. We've earned eight, eighty-five thousand, nine hundred, nine dollars and forty-two cents in interest, and up to and including the items that are on the agenda tonight, if they are approved through tonight's meeting, we will have spent four million, seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and thirty-six dollars and twelve cents, and that will leave us with a balance of fifteen million, nine hundred and fourth, nine hundred and two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and fifty-five cents, and that is the financial report.
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. Does any member of the council have any questions on the financial report? Seeing none, we'll move on to C forty-seven.
C dash forty-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of sixty thousand dollars be made to the election and registrations expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund. We did get a letter from our city clerk requesting the money on January ninth, twenty-twenty. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, I am respectfully requesting an additional appropriation of sixty thousand dollars to the elections account. Specifically, this money will be used to pay for our election workers for early voting for March, for the March election and for the March election itself. Due to new protocols and procedures that will require more election staff and more hours spent at the polls to properly facilitate and administer elections, currently I have a remaining balance of eighty-four thousand, nine hundred dollars in my elections account. Every quarter, I do a special review and projection of my election account based off upcoming events and needs. The legislature voted in, voted in early voting for March third of twenty-twenty presidential primary. Originally, this was not going to take place and has added an additional financial burden to the elections account. After looking at my account, I estimate the following costs will need to be set aside to cover the rest of the year. And I'm not going to read them all. I don't believe I'm required to, but if anybody from the public is interested to know what all the costs are, there is a very long breakdown of them, and this document is available in the city clerk's office. So basically, you know, long story short, we are mandated to do this. We don't have any option. It's another sort of unfunded mandate from Beacon Hill that we're going to have early voting for the primaries in March and no funding to the cities and towns for it. So we'll be paying for this, and my recommendation would be to grant, and I'll check with members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of finance to grant. C dash forty-seven, is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of granting C dash forty-seven, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed? The petition is passed by a vote of nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of sixty thousand dollars be appropriated to the elections and registration expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order. This is a yea or nay vote. All those in favor of adopting the order, please say yea.
Yea.
Those opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the order has been adopted. We'll move on to C dash forty-eight.
C dash forty-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appro, oh, actually, I apologize, Mr. President. I, I am the, I'm on the Disability Commission. I'm actually the treasurer of it, so it would be a ethics problem if I get involved in this. I can't wear both hats, so I need to defer to the, to the clerk of finance to handle this.
Your extension will be noted, and the clerk will take over for you on C forty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. President. C dash forty-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of two thousand dollars be made to the Police Department overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the disability fines receipts reserved for appropriation account. We did receive a letter from the Disability Commission dated November twentieth of two thousand nineteen. Dear Mayor Mazzarella, the Leominster Disability Commission convened at our regularly monthly meeting on Tuesday, November nineteenth, and it was discussed to recommend that you place on the City Council agenda a request for the approval of two thousand dollars to be withdrawn from our handicap parking account, of which is to be allotted to the Leominster Police Department for the handicap parking detail. If you have any questions or concerns, please do not hesitate to contact our co-chairperson, Marty Turbide, and it says, "Thank you for your time and consideration regarding this matter." This, I'm informed, comes up on a regular, a fairly regular basis. It's coming out of their own funds, and there is a positive balance in that account. So it would be my position to ask that we approve the appropriation this evening.
Okay, and I'll check with the other member of your committee that hasn't abstained, Counselor Angelini?
I agree.
So the MS recommendation of finance is to grant C dash forty-eight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C forty-eight, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of eight to nothing, C forty-eight is granted. Does the clerk have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of two thousand dollars be appropriated to the Police Department overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the disability fines receipts reserved for appropriation account.
You have heard the request for the adoption of the order. This is a yea or nay vote. All those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed? By a vote of eight to nothing, the adoption, the order has been adopted. Moving on to C forty-nine.
C dash forty-nine, Dean J., Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, relative to the appropriation of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars be made to the I T T F expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund. We did get a, we did get a letter. It is here. This is, I guess this is co-written by Gregory Chapdeline, the purchasing agent for the City of Leominster, as well as William B. Mitchell, the chief assessor, dated January sixteenth, twenty-twenty.
That's different.
I'm sorry? Oh, this is not...
No.
This is thirty-five...
Yeah, you're skipping ahead.
Okay, that's thirty-five twenty.
You're on thirty-five twenty.
All right. Maybe we didn't get any explanation on this, but I did...
The back of the, the back of the...
Again, double-sided copies are too much...
Yeah, ClearCom has a work schedule.
I do have that. So, so basically, oh, is this, that's thirty-five twenty. I don't think we got an explanation, but I, but I did have a conversation, I have that, but I did have a conversation with Greg Chapdeline today. Basically, I will explain, it's pretty simple. If you look at the backside, there is a chart, although I did think there was a communication in writing, but I guess not. There is a chart here. We are replacing a bunch of equipment. If you go through this chart, you can see a due date estimate. I'm not going to read all this, but once again, for the public, if they're interested in knowing, this is on file in the city clerk's office, they're going to be replacing computers, memory and license upgrades, just to name a few. I'm not going to name them all. And there's a City Hall, it looks like a City Hall sixteen migration. So they're basically going to be doing a lot of work to make upgrades in, in, in City Hall so that we can have secure systems and new and upgraded systems, and certainly I'm in favor of this, and I will check with members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I agree.
You have heard the MS recommendation of finance to grant. C dash forty-nine, is there any discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor of granting C forty-nine, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed? C forty-nine has been granted by a vote of nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of one hundred and fifty thousand dollars be appropriated to the I T T F expense account, seem to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Move for the adoption of the order.
You have heard, heard the request for the adoption of the order. This is a yea or nay vote. All those in favor, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Those opposed? The order has been adopted by a vote of nine to zero. We now move on to thirty-five dash twenty.
Okay, thirty-five dash twenty. Gregory C. Chapdeline, purchasing agent, request to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for information technology managed services for the city for a six-year period. Again, I, I think I was getting it too confused, too, because they're kind of sort of related. One is a contract to do the services for what we just, some of the money that we just appropriated. So anyway, this, this is co-written by Gregory C. Chapdeline, purchasing agent, William B. Mitchell, chief assessor, dated January sixteenth, twenty-twenty. This is regarding to allow a six-year contract for information technology managed services. Dear Honorable Members of the Leominster City Council, this petition is to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for information technology managed services for the city for a six-year period. This is in preparation for the next services contract that the city will be bidding out this year, beginning in March. The current contract will expire this June. Per Massachusetts General Law, chapter thirty B, section twelve B, the city can only enter into service contracts for a length of time equal to three years or less. In order to enter into a service contract for a length of time greater than three years, the City Council must pass a majority approval vote to allow the extension. Said council approval must be granted before the contract is executed. The city has been entering into a services contract for I T services for several years now, with this agreement working to the city's advantage. As can be expected, the potential of having to change I T vendors every few years can be disruptive to city operations. For this reason, the I T T F committee would like to move to a longer contract period in order to minimize disruptions as well as capture the pricing advantages a long-term contract can bring. This action must be voted upon now as the purchasing agent prepares to issue the new bid, since it must be known what time period or of the contract length we'll be able to structure the bid around. We would respectfully advise the City Council vote in favor of allowing the I T managed services contract over to cover a six-year period. So I, we've done these in the past. They work out well. They save us money and create continuity, as the letter indicated. I am in favor of it, and I'll check with members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I support the chairman's recommendation.
You've heard the MS recommendation of finance to authorize the six-year contract. All those in favor, please do so, indicate by raising usual manner. Those opposed, by a vote of nine to nothing, the authorization is granted. Moving on to Legal Affairs, twenty-six dash twenty. Does the chairman have a report?
I do, Mr. President. Twenty-six twenty. Jeffrey D. Nickel intend registered voters to accept Dobson Circle as a street in the City of Leominster. My, my report is, is convoluted, Mr. President. We, we got a letter dated January twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty from the Planning and Development Director indicating that the Planning Board had voted six-zero to recommend approval of this petition, but that they needed further time to answer the questions that we raised at our last meeting. Apparently, they didn't get a recommendation from the D P W, who sets the standard. We got a letter from the D P W dated February fourth, twenty-twenty, that indicated that they had not heard from the developer for approximately four years. The letter dated September twenty-third, two thousand sixteen, from the developer, from the D P W to the developer indicates some additional work that needed to be done. We also got a copy of the subdivision approval, which had some requirements in it of a bond, also required the developer, within one year of the project being complete, to petition the City Council to have the road accepted. I, I don't know if any of that was done, but, and I, I feel badly that these neighbors are down here, but I think the, we, we can't, we can't approve this petition unless the D P W tells us that the road is at a point where the city can approve it. So what I'd like to do, and, and I, and I do apologize, but it's, it's sort of beyond my, my help at this point, what I'd like to do, and I, and I asked you to defer my, to my committee, is have a, a subcommittee meeting. I'd like the Planning Director to come down. I'd like the Planning Board to come down. I'd like the City Engineer to come down. I'd like the D P W Director to come down, and I, you know, honestly like to find out what the hell is going on. I, I think that's really the, the best course we can take at this point, so I'd ask you to defer to my committee.
Yeah, so essentially, you're looking for further time tonight, but with the, with the...
Scheduling of a subcommittee meeting.
Scheduling a subcommittee meeting to get some necessary information to proceed.
Yeah, and I'd like, if we could, normally we schedule these subcommittee meetings at the end of the night, but I'd like to schedule them now, so everybody knows when it is, and they can make arrangements.
Okay. Well, let me, let me poll your committee on the issue of further time first. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I absolutely support that. We need more information.
I absolutely support that, we need more information, unfortunately.
Yeah, Counselor David Cormier?
I also support that, but I, you know, I have a few comments as well before I'm willing to make that my, you know, my final answer. I believe the DPW, I mean, I believe the planning board met, and they voted six to nothing to recommend approval, but, you know, what does that mean? I mean, you know, who's, I haven't gotten any answers yet as to bond money. I've actually, I had a conversation today with the city clerk, and from what I'm hearing, there was no bond money for this project, at all, taken. And if there wasn't, I am demanding answers. I mean, this is unacceptable, totally. And so, I want to know, what the, what the, what are we voting on? You know, we can, we can vote tonight and say, yeah, we're just going to accept it, we're going to throw it up to the mayor's office, and, you know, he can do what he wants with it. He can take it in his domain, he can, you know, work with the planning board to work with the. I want to know what I'm voting on. You know, I don't want to bury this by saying, well, I'm just going to vote to accept it, and it's off my desk, not my problem. Nobody, nobody knows all the details. I want to know how much bond money there, there is, and there was. And has the developer walked away? You know, I know we had a similar situation four months ago, down here, and, you know, they were very, the planning board chair was very candid with us and told us the developer has walked away, there's ten grand left, and we're going to work to get the money taken and fix the rest of it, and, and accept it. I've still seen nothing, so I need to understand, you know, what's going on here, and, you know, once again, make sure that, going forward, that this is, is over with.
By, by way of clarification, the owner of the fee in the street, which would be the developer, I would assume, needs to make the petition, because they've got to convey that title to the city. And the city won't accept that title until the road is in proper condition. So the petition that's before us has some, has some utility, because, you know, at this point, I guess people are getting frustrated, and we want answers. So, we really have no choice. I agree with Counselor that adopting this tonight would be a, would be an empty gesture. And I do agree with the chair that we need to establish a subcommittee and get some information and some answers. So, the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is for further time. So, let's vote on that, and then you'll establish, do you want to establish publicly your subcommittee date and time?
I, I think that, I think that makes sense, when everybody's here.
So, the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs is to give petition twenty-six dash twenty further time. All those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, the petition is given further time by a nine-zero vote. And, Mr. Chair, I'll hear you on a subcommittee plan.
I can do Wednesday, February nineteenth, anytime in the evening, or February twentieth, anytime in the evening. I don't know about my subcommittee. So Wednesday and Thursday.
Are those dates available to your subcommittee members?
The nineteenth is.
The nineteenth is fine for me.
Perfect.
Yep.
Okay, that's good for you, Counselor Cormier?
That's, yes, that's correct.
All right, so we're going to establish, or you're going to establish a subcommittee hearing on Wednes, I'm sorry.
Wednesday, February nineteenth, I would suggest six o'clock.
Okay, the time acceptable?
Yep.
Okay, that's the subcommittee meeting. The clerk will issue the appropriate notices. Counselor Frida, did I see your hand?
Not that anybody needs a bright side, but we've gone through a number of street request acceptances from twenty years old that people lost out back in the eighties when developers are just leaving and nowhere to be found. This has actually got two developers that are still local, and it, it needs to be looked at, because they need to be fixing the roads.
Very well, Counselor Fekley.
Through the chair, to the Chair of Legal Affairs. I, I plan on attending this meeting, but what I would request is that on the agenda is also the discussion of the fire hydrant that is not working on Dobson Circle. That's, that's something that keeps you up at night, that these people do not have, you know, a, a fire hydrant that works.
Yeah, we'll bring, we will definitely bring that up, absolutely.
Very seriously, okay, and discussed on what can be done, besides waiting for the developer to come up with money, or the fact that we don't have any bond money. So, that, I think that really needs to be discussed, even outside of the regular box.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Fekley.
Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to petition twenty-seven dash twenty.
Mr., Mr. President, petition twenty-seven dash twenty, Beth Spinelli intend registered voters to accept Massapoag Road as a street in the city of Leominster. This is a, a similar situation, almost, almost a mirror situation to the previous petition. So I would ask for further time, and I would ask that this also be subject of a subcommittee meeting at the, the same time, the same date.
Okay.
Maybe put it on for six-thirty.
So I'll, I'll check with your committee members on further time. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes, I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
And, as I understand it, Mr. Chairman, you'll add this to your agenda for the February nineteenth meeting, as you indicated, they're very related.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, you've heard the recommendation of finance to grant, I mean, to give twenty-seven dash twenty further time. Any further discussion? All those in favor of giving twenty-seven dash twenty, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, twenty-seven dash twenty is given further time by a vote of nine to zero. We'll now move on to twenty-eight dash twenty.
Just one second, please. What did we say, February nineteenth?
February nineteenth, six o'clock.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Petition twenty-eight dash twenty, Officer Julio Ramos, install parking signs and no parking signs on Research Drive. We had some confusion with the language of this petition. The police department has come back with a correction. So initially, Mr. President, I would move to amend, to delete from the petition parking signs and, so that it would read, install no parking signs on Research Drive.
Okay, so that's a formal motion by the chair. Is there a second on the amendment?
Second.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, second. Is there any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor of amending twenty-eight dash twenty by deleting the words parking signs and, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, the amendment passes nine to zero. Does the chairman have a report on the amended petition?
Yes, my recommendation would be to grant the amendment, the petition as amended. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I would be happy to do that. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes, I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous, we have to establish public hearing as well. So, we grant it first, all right. So, all, all those, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of Legal Affairs to grant twenty-eight dash twenty. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting twenty-eight dash twenty, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, twenty-eight twenty is granted by a vote of nine to zero. We need to establish a public hearing.
Whatever the clerk suggests.
Piling them up.
February twenty-fourth, 2020, at six forty-six PM.
You've heard the recommendation to establish a public hearing on two-twenty-four at six forty-six, did you say? Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor of establishing that hearing date, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, the hearing date is established by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to twenty-nine dash twenty, does the chairman have a report?
I do, Mr. President. Petition twenty-nine dash twenty, Jill A. Nataula to accept Sammaset Drive and Candlewood Drive as a street in the city of Leominster. We've refused, we received referrals from the Department of Public Works, who approved this petition, the building inspector likewise approves this petition, and the planning board approves this petition. So given those circumstances, my recommendation is we grant petition twenty-nine dash twenty, and I'd refer you to, I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes, I'm, I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I totally agree.
The unanimous recommendation of finances to grant twenty-nine dash twenty, is there any discussion? Yes, Counselor Cormier?
Thank you, Mr. President. I, I believe that this is the last phase of the acceptance of that entire subdivision of, I think it's Sammaset, or Sammaset subdivision, or whatever they call it, I forget the name on the sign up there now, but, you know, I just want to, I just want to say that it's been a very, very long process. I mean, it started with street name signs that weren't in place. I called the developer, they had them made to the city standard, they paid for them, DPW put, put them in. We had problems with the, with the utility easement up there, where the overhead power lines run, people thought it was still a place where you could dirt bike. They were, they refused to, to realize that it had become a neighborhood, and people wanted to enjoy their homes, especially on the weekends, and didn't want to listen to dirt bikes all week. So I got the utilities to, to make improvements to their easements. We had, we started, we had issues, we couldn't accept the roads because there weren't any streetlights. There was supposed to be certain streetlights put in that were, you know, there was a base board for them, you know, I forget how many years ago, but the electric company didn't provide those poles anymore. That was some old program they had. I mean, this was an incredible amount of work. And the phone calls, and the emails, and the hours that I've spent on, on this was unbelievable. You know, I had, I had to convince the mayor to get into the same room with National Grid and the developer, and work this out, and, you know, it was, you know, what came first, the chicken or the egg? Are we, you know, was the city going to pay for lighting? We don't own the, we don't own the streets yet? Or do we own the streets before we put the lighting in? I mean, it was, because the city can only contract for street lighting, nobody else can. So it was, you know, it was just a, an incredible amount of work to get everybody to agree on how we were going to move and to get it done. And I think a lot of people should take lessons from this development. They did the right thing. The planning board takes no credit for this at all, zero. They did, they did not have, they, they did not take any initiative on this, believe me. So, the, all the other developers in the city should really take notice of the behavior of this developer, and everything that was done the right way, so that we have a neighborhood that, when there's a problem, if I need to petition no parking signs, anything like that, as their ward counselor, I don't have to tell them, you live on an unaccepted street, you're paying, you know, five, six thousand, seven thousand, some of those homes maybe even more, a year in taxes, and I can't do anything for you. It's totally unacceptable. So, I just want to very clearly state that I can't thank the developers enough, the attorney that spent a lot of hours drawing up all of this language to make sure that is, you know, in, in the form that we can accept it and have it recorded with the Registry of Deeds, and officially own the streets. So, I just want to thank everybody involved, the mayor, the developer, the National Grid, everybody that worked together over the years to make this development what it is supposed to be. Thank you.
Is there any, any further discussion on twenty-nine dash twenty? Seeing none, you've heard the unanimous recommendation, recommendation of finance, I'm sorry, Legal Affairs, to grant twenty-nine dash twenty. All those in favor, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, twenty-nine dash twenty passes by a vote of nine to zero. We need to establish a public hearing on February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty, at six-thirty PM. Any discussion on the public hearing date and time? Seeing none, all those in favor of establishing the public hearing, as indicated, please state, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, the public hearing is established for February twenty-fourth, 2020, at six-thirty PM. Moving on to thirty-six dash twenty. Does the chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President. Petition thirty-six dash twenty, Claire M. Frida, Counselor at Large, request to amend Sections Twenty-one dash thirteen-B and Twenty-one dash thirteen of the Leominster City Ordinance by deleting, quote, "Cost of all repairs made to or connections between private property and main sewers shall be paid for by the owner of the property," end quote, and replace with, quote, "Costs of all repairs made to or connections between private property and main sewers shall be the responsibility of the city with no cost to the homeowner," end quote. This language also to be applied to water mains as described in Twenty-one dash thirteen-B, Leominster City Ordinance, Section Twenty-one dash twenty-three. We received some referrals. One is dated January twenty-eighth, 2020. This one is from David LaPlant, the treasurer slash collector, to the city clerk. Caitlin, I have no information available on the number of people participating in the water sewer line insurance protection plan, and no historical incidence of connection repairs by homeowners. Since the DPW water and sewer departments have their own budgets and are receipts-based, I would believe that any relief from the costs for a water or sewer connection repairs would directly affect those departments and their budgets moving forward. I would suggest a careful study of the trends and costs of these types of repairs, so one could estimate the effect it would have on the budgets of the water or sewer departments. I personally don't think the city should have to pay for repairs to a homeowner's water slash sewer lines, since they are on private property and could open the city up for further insurance costs and repair costs to the property, et cetera. Please let me know if you have any questions. Sincerely, David R. LaPlant, Treasurer/Collector for the City of Leominster. We also received a letter dated January twenty-ninth, 2020, from the Raymond Racine, Director of Public Works, also addressed to the city clerk. Dear Ms. Huffman, the Department of Public Works is against petition thirty-six dash twenty for several reasons. The Department of Public Works is not equipped to perform the repairs slash replacement to privately owned water and sewer services without the hiring of four new people and several pieces of costly construction equipment. If the city was to privately control the repairs, it would be at a premium cost as prevailing wage rates would need to be paid to a private contractor, and therefore increasing labor costs at a minimum double, i.e. a twenty-five-dollar-an-hour laborer would now earn fifty dollars plus. Over the past three years, ninety-nine water and sewer services have had repairs made by the private homeowner with private contractors. Would they now be allowed to file for abatement? An insurance policy is available to private homeowners at a cost of one hundred and seventy-five dollars per year for water and sewer services. There are one thousand three hundred and forty-six existing policies in the city, and have had repairs made over the past three years in the neighborhood, totaling over one hundred and forty-one thousand dollars of contractor work done to their service connections. This program has been very successful. An additional situation that may complicate this proposal is the fact that many times, it is not known where the problem slash blockage exists. It can't be determined until the service is excavated. Many times, it starts on private property and must continue to open the city roadway. This will recreate all sorts of complications. If additional information is needed, please contact our office. Sincerely, Raymond Racine, Director of Public Works. We also have a letter referral from the mayor's office dated February fourth, 2020. This is addressed to the Leominster City Council. Dear Members of the City Council, with respect to petition thirty-six dash twenty, my recommendation would be against passage. The Department of Public Works has completed an analysis of the cost to the city should this petition pass. With nearly one hundred services being repaired over the past three years, it is estimated we would need to hire four new people and purchase additional equipment to complete these jobs. In addition, there is a significant unknown. The Department of Public Works has done an excellent job at analyzing our sewer water system within the city's street limits. We would have no idea of knowing what the condition of the pipes are from private homes to the street. This often cannot be determined until the ground is opened up. Therefore, a pipe replacement. Therefore, a pipe replacement could turn into much more, leaving the city open to an undetermined expense for years to come. An insurance policy is available to homeowners for $175 a year. In Lemmonster, 1,346 people have purchased this policy. Given the undetermined amount of the cost to the city, should this petition pass, I recommend against it. Thank you. Sincerely, Dean J. Mazarella, Mayor. At this point, I, I mean, I personally understand the motive behind, behind the petition, which is, which is to help people. I get that, and I just think that, as chairman, my opinion is that this is a slippery slope that this city is not prepared to go down at this time. I think you're opening up Pandora's Box, that's just my opinion, and I certainly understand the sentiments behind the petition, but my recommendation is to deny 36-20. I'd ask you to pull my committee.
I'll check with Counselor Chalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you very much. This one is, it's a really tough situation. It, we've discussed it before, it's been before the city council before, and it is absolutely about helping people throughout the city, especially older folks who are trying to stay in their homes, and we all know the cost can be extremely significant, you know, even if it's a small fix, it still is a lot of money to most homeowners, and it can be very, very expensive. I, you know, I think it's, I think it's a tough call, and I think, based on the information that, you know, the DPW has provided, as well as, I think, the mayor's points, and I think the other point that was made about, I think the DPW director made the point about, you know, people over the last three years have been, you know, they've had their services fixed, and they have paid that money. I mean, would we go back and try to abate some of those things? I mean, it's a really hard, hard proposition. So, you know, I am inclined to support the chairman's recommendation to deny, and I would also, the $175 insurance policy cost, for a lot of people, that is also, that's an impediment, you know, to getting their services fixed. So what I will do is ask the question, is there any way for the city, you know, to help offset some of that cost, some of that insurance policy cost, for people that are, you know, in need of some help? I mean, we do have a city program where seniors can work off, you know, some of their property taxes, there's a program to do that, and I think it's worth exploring that we might be able to help lower that $175 cost for households for whom it's a significant problem, because I think, you know, I understand, you know, Mr. Chico's comments, and I understand the rationale that the counselor-at-large to my left, her intent in putting the position forward. So, again, I think it's, I think it's a, it's a worthy, you know, it's a worthy question, it's a worthy thing for us to discuss, but I, at this point, I guess I would have to agree with the legal affairs chairman and the recommendations from the mayor and the DPW.
I'll check with Counselor David Cormier.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Thank you very much, Mr. President. I also agree with, you know, denial of this petition. I mean, I, there's no question about it. I mean, it, you know, tomorrow morning, you get a phone call from someone who's, you know, water pipe, you know, let go, and it's on their property. It's not, it's not easy to tell them, you know, it's, you know, it's your responsibility, and there is an insurance policy that every, every rate payer gets in the mail, you know. I think five times a year, I get one, and I personally have not bought it, and I should. You know, everybody knows that we have an ordinance, and it's your responsibility, we do have an insurance policy, and, you know, I think it really, it puts an unknown burden on the city. You know, how do we set, how do we set rates? How do we set water rates? I don't want to go back to the days of, you know, you got to set rates based on, you know, I'm sure there's some formula, we'd have to set, we'd have to increase rates, you got to, you got to plan for, you know, what the liability becomes, you know, to the city. I agree with the, the at-large counselor on my committee as well, that, you know, just talked about, you know, maybe some help, maybe we can set up a fund, you know, where people can be, can be helped to reduce the cost of this insurance policy. I believe I've had somebody that's encountered a problem with their pipe, and the, it was a funny situation, they went through their homeowner's insurance, and their homeowner's insurance didn't cover, all the, all the homeowner's insurance covered was the landscape, which was weird, but that's all they covered. So your homeowner's insurance policy probably is not going to cover much, and it is, it is, it is tough, it's, it would be tough to tell somebody that, you know, they've got to, you know, shell out, depending on how long your pipe is and what's, what's wrong, thousands and thousands of dollars, but, you know, I'm a, I'm a steward of the taxpayers' money, and I just can't create some unknown burden to the taxpayers, especially, you know, we don't have Manpower, we don't have all these things. It'd be something we'd have to have a real discussion about and plan for, and you don't just do it in a whim. And even at that, I don't know that I'd want to go down that road, so I certainly support denial.
You've heard the MS recommendation of legal affairs to deny 36-20. Is there any discussion? Counselor Frida.
Thank you, Mr. President. I put this in for a couple people that had called me about it. It was meant to go on the table to have a discussion. To go back to 2008, Counselor Savatelli was trying to help someone, brought it to the forefront, nothing was ever resolved. The confusion still weighed in whether it was acceptable or not. There's some real discussion here. First of all, this is not taxpayer money, it's rate payer money, there's a big difference, not for the, for the general taxes, it's for the water and sewer accounts. The second thing is that this is not going onto people's private property. If you look at a street, now, let's take Route 12, Mr. Chico's property, in the middle of the road, you have the main, and if you, if that water main has an effect to his house, he's responsible to the end of his property. From the end of his property line to the middle of that road where the pipe is, which is under a city street, is what this refers to. It's not on his property, it's on city property under the roads, and that's, that's the difference here. It's not, I mean, we get Ray Racine saying it's private property going on the, there's no way the city can go onto someone's private property. I would never put anything in that even closely suggests that, because it's not, I mean, that's a lawsuit waiting to happen, and we've had lawsuits regarding that in the past. It's clearly to look at from the, from the property line to the middle line, and if you take some of these properties around the city, and Route 12 being one of them, Route 13 being another one, we have all these older homes, and you have a continuous traffic flow of trailer trucks, fire trucks. The equity to those people living on those roads in some of the older homes compared to someone who lives on a subdivision that doesn't have that kind of traffic is unfair, as far as I'm concerned. Whether this could be resolved by looking at the city having some responsibility to that, or whether, I had already mentioned at the last meeting about doing something with the $175, there's a number, let's put some ideas on the table and see if there's something we can do. If there isn't, let's once and for all say there's absolutely nothing we can do, and there's no confusion with anybody anymore. I had a subcommittee meeting set up for next Monday with Roger Brooks and Ray Racine to talk about this. There's, we have trails that are being built. Who's going to work the trails? Could somebody be a trails steward, and then if something happens, they could cover a break? I mean, there are a number of, number of possibilities. Are any of those available? If they're not, then let's find that out. But I would respectfully request that this be put off till we can have that subcommittee meeting, and if we find that there's nothing we could do, then, you know, I, I'll be aligned to deny it.
Any other discussion? Counselor Oringjer.
You know, I would be in agreement to put this off till after the subcommittee meeting. The question I have is, if this exists between the main and the, and the city, the property line, why isn't that covered by the city? Because it's on city property, it's really city property, and maybe we need to...
Just for clarification, the city has had an ordinance, which is what prompts this petition, for a long time, that suggests that the lateral connection, the responsibility for the lateral connection is the homeowners. So that lateral connection only serves that one address. So the common sewer or common water line, which is out in the street, is the city's problem. But where there's a lateral, that is a line which is not a common sewer or a common water line, it will traverse some measure usually of public property, and then, of course, private property, to accomplish its objective, which is to transfer sewage or water from the common sewer, the public line, to the private homeowner. So that, the city has taken a position long ago that all of that lateral line, wherever it lies, whether it's on private property, public property, or both, is the responsibility of the homeowner. So that's, that's just a clarification of what the rule is currently.
I gathered that when I read the ordinance, but is it possible that the ordinance could be amended to cover that lateral line up to the property line?
Well, that's what...
That's what this is.
That's what Counselor Frida...
But just up to the property line, the way it reads...
That's what this is.
Maybe I misread the...
It's to amend the ordinance.
Anything on the private property would be still the homeowner's responsibility.
Yes.
Okay, I misread the ordinance.
We have no jurisdiction on private, through the chair, we have no jurisdiction on private property. This is clearly to take just the pieces under city roads that could be affected by the traveling, which is one of, one of the issues with 60, 70, 80, 90, 100-year-old pipes, that may be affected from just that point. And it, the city always had that responsibility, and the Perler administration, they changed it.
It would also be interesting, I don't know if we could do this or not, but to see how, how it would affect the rates of the city and water sewer system, to see if, maybe, that may even be more than $175 than, for the insurance policy. It's just a arbitrary thing, but without knowing how it would affect the rates, it's kind of, kind of nebulous, to be honest with you, you know, that the insurance policy, from my perspective, is a fairly, fairly inexpensive, but I understand that it could affect some homeowners, you know, negatively, and possibly having the city subsidize that in some manner for low-income people, that might, might be a possibility, but I would wait to, want to wait till after the public hearing.
Counselor Fekley?
I would be in support of further time. I would like more information if, I know we're going to be, going to be going into public service on this too, but if, you know, Counselor Frida has a plan to bring down Mr. Racine, Mr. Brooks, I think that they could give us a lot of information. I mean, this actually happened to me about six or seven years ago, and there was four or five hours of, you know, tremulous worry before they came and realized that it was not, that it was the city's responsibility. So, you know, we purchased the insurance, which gives you lots of peace of mind, and I would very much support Counselor Frida and Counselor Chalfo's efforts. If they wanted to become champions, I would join them in seeing if we could have the city help anybody that couldn't afford the, the rate, the fee for the insurance to pick it up. But at this point, I don't think that I have enough information to accept or deny this petition, and I would very much support further time.
Counselor Angelini?
Thank you, Mr. President. I came here tonight fully prepared to debate this issue, I did quite a bit of research, but I tend to side with those who like to get some more information, is I, judging by what I've read in these referrals, I think there's some confusion about what this petition is addressing, to be quite frank. So I'd like to see that confusion turn into some clarity, and then I think we could, we'd all be better off and, and better, in a better position to act on this petition. So I would be in favor of subcommittee meeting as well, to garner some additional information and some clarity, so that everybody's on the same page.
Any other councils wanting to be heard? Counselor David Cormier?
Thank you very much. You know, I think one of the issues too is, you know, I'm not so sure that there's any kind of a correlation between, you know, where you live, whether you're on, you know, Main Street with 20,000 cars driving on it a day and rattling the road, and, or you live on a cul-de-sac. I mean, you know, a lot of, a lot of the problem, especially there is a problem in my neighborhood, there's been a lot of broken pipes over the years, is how they were installed.
Yep.
You know, in New England, you have to properly install water pipes. We get, the ground freezes very deep, and when the ground freezes, there's shifting that goes on under there. And if you lay a water pipe on rock, and it, the frost goes all the way down that deep, once the, once the ground freezes and things shift, there's no give. So a pipe needs to be put in, you know, sand, and there's got to be some give to it, so when the freezing and shifting goes on, the pipe can move, and if it can't move, it's going to snap. So, you know, I'm sure that there is no correlation between a busy road and, you know, how some of these developers are, you know, putting a pipe in as cheap as possible, and there's no give in a bad winter when the, when the freeze and frost goes deep and your pipe breaks. So, you know, I, I still, I, I, you know, I still don't support, you know, changing the ordinance. I think we would have to have, this would need time. We'd have to work with the mayor for funding, he's got to hire people. Is he going to give, is there going to be funding to hire people? We got to work, we got to secure funding with him. You know, that wouldn't be done till God only knows when, so, thank you.
Anyone else? Counselor Dabrowski?
Yeah, I, I made my recommendation based on my personal feelings after reviewing this, and this has come up down here before, but, I mean, I would never, I would never stand in the way of other counselors wanting to get more information on a topic, particularly where we have, you know, several new counselors, are fairly new.
Well, you have a committee report unanimous to deny, so unless you want to change your committee, do some additional committee work.
Yeah, I do.
I think what's before us is, is your report.
Sure, that's what, that's what I, you know, which was made before the, before the discussion, but I mean, I, I certainly don't have a problem further timing it, although I do think maybe this is something that needs to be tabled, because there's going to be a lot more information if you really want to delve into it, but I don't have a problem with either further timing this or tabling it, so these other counselors can get the information they need, and I just ask you to repol my committee.
Well, let's, let's pick one, and I'll repol your committee, how's that?
Well, why don't we further time it so we can keep...
All right, I'll check with Counselor Chalfo Zephyr.
I am happy to go along with further time.
Counselor David Cormier?
I will painfully sit through a subcommittee meeting.
All right, so, I take it the MS recommendation is for further time. Is there any further discussion on the new report? Seeing none, all those in favor of further time, please signify in the usual manner. Those opposed, the petition is given further time by a vote of nine to zero. I will say and clarify for the record that this petition has been referred to two committees, not only legal affairs, but of course, public service. I am not going to conduct a joint committee meeting of those two committees. Those two committees are comprised of six counselors total. The only ones not on public service or legal affairs are myself, Counselor Angelini, and Counselor Oringjer. To me, it's a little bit unwieldy to have a supermajority of the council making a recommendation report. So if either of those committees want to conduct a subcommittee report, they can conduct it the same night, but I won't hold a, when this is heard again here, I'm not going to hold, like I did tonight, I won't hold a joint committee meeting, if that makes any sense to anybody. Yes, Counselor Dabrowski?
I, I don't know, I didn't hear Counselor Frida correctly, I don't know if she intends to schedule a subcommittee.
She, she indicated that she was scheduling one.
She had scheduled one?
Or was going to schedule one.
It's scheduled.
It is scheduled.
Six fifteen before the next meeting.
Okay.
Before February 24.
Twenty-fourth meeting? Okay.
I would ask, I just think we've got, like, seven meetings, by last count, starting like fifteen minutes after that.
We have a lot of public hearings.
I just think something like... I just think something like this, maybe on an off night, I'd just ask Counselor Frida to reconsider that. I just-
Well, maybe we should take the vote, did we took the vote on further time, right? Oh, good. Whatever you want to work out, if Counselor Frida wants to do that.
The hearing that you have are like every two minutes, except for the water and sewer, and then Roger and, and one of the reasons doing it was because they were going to be here anyway.
That does have some logic to it.
I don't-
My point on doing further time was to have conversation with Roger and Ray Racine. If it requires impossibility and we deny it after, if it requires tabling it at that point to do more studying, I thought that would be determined by a subcommittee meeting.
Okay, I don't know how much we're going to get done in twenty minutes, but, you know-
We may have to recess the meeting and tough it out.
Okay.
We're going to do it sooner or later.
No, we've done it before.
And they're going to be here, as the counselor indicates.
That's fine.
Do you want to try, start it at six?
I defer to-
Counselor Frida would have to amend her subcommittee notice.
Six fifteen.
Would you, countenance starting it at 6:00 PM instead of six fifteen?
Sure, I have to tell Roger.
Yeah, the clerk will take care of that. All right, so the clerk will issue the appropriate amended subcommittee notice? All right, so I think that finishes up legal affairs, correct?
For now, yeah.
All right, so we move on to public service, thirty-six dash twenty. Is the chairperson ready to report? Same-
I am, Mr. President. My recommendation would be for further time.
And I'll check with members of your committee. Counselor, let's see, we have public service. Counselor Fecle?
I agree.
And Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
So the unanimous recommendation of public service is to grant thirty-six dash twenty further time. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting thirty-six dash twenty on the public service calendar, further time, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, the thirty-six dash twenty is given further time. We now move on to ways and means. Perhaps Counselor Fecle, we can take these and block?
We certainly can. Appointments. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Ann B. Mahan to registrar voters, term to expire April fifteenth, 2023. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Nancy P. Marini to registrar voters, term to expire April fifteenth, 2023. A measure to confirm the mayor's reappointment of Charles Milhans to register voters, term to expire April fifteenth, 2023. We did receive a letter from the mayor dated January fourteenth asking that these three individuals be reappointed, and I think that I can speak for the members of the council in saying that these three individuals have served the city on the registrar voters very well for many, many years, and I would be very pleased to recommend their reappointment. And I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Yes, Counselor Frida? And Counselor Dabrowski?
Yes.
So you've heard the unanimous recommendation of ways and means to confirm the appointments of Ann B. Mahan, Nancy P. Marini, and Charles Milhans. Is any discussion? I think I'll do this by roll call, starting with Counselor Frida.
Yay.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Fecle?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndt?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I will be recorded as yay. Moving on to thirty-two dash twenty.
You do it very well.
No problem, right?
No problem. She asked. Yay, all right.
Thirty-two dash twenty, an election order by the City of Leominster relative to the presidential primary, March third, 2020. Commonwealth Massachusetts, William Francis Galvin, Secretary of the Commonwealth, City of Leominster, election order for presidential primary, March third, 2020. Voted that millions of the citizens of the city qualified to vote in the election for presidential primaries shall be held on Tuesday, the third day of March 2020, from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM for the purpose of casting their votes in the presidential preference primary election for the candidates of political parties for the following offices. Presidential preference for this Commonwealth, State Committee Man, Western Middle Sex District, State Committee Woman, Western Middle Sex District, Ward Committee for each ward in the City of Leominster. It is further ordered that the following polling places are designated by the city council. Ward one, Precinct A, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward one, Precinct B, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward one, Precinct C, Skyview Middle School, 500 Kennedy Way. Ward two, Precinct A, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Visco Lloyd Avenue. Ward two, Precinct B, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Visco Lloyd Avenue. Ward two, Precinct C, Francis Drake Elementary School, 95 Visco Lloyd Avenue. Ward three, Precinct A, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward three, Precinct B, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward three, Precinct C, Fraternal Order of Eagles Hall, 456 Litchfield Street. Ward four, Precinct A, Senior Citizens Drop-In Center, 5 Pond Street. Ward four, Precinct B, Leominster Veteran Center, 100 West Street. Ward four, Precinct C, Leominster Veteran Center, 100 West Street. Ward five, Precinct A, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward five, Precinct B, Auditorium, City Hall, 25 West Street. Ward five, Precinct C, First Baptist Church of Leominster, 23 West Street. Here I would fail not and make return of this warrant with your doings thereon at the time and place of said voting, given under our hands with places for the city council to sign. Order posted in public places as follows: City Hall, Veteran Center, Police Department, Fire Stations, Library, Recreation Department, DPW, School Department, Cemetery Department, Wastewater Treatment Plant, Emergency Management, Montechusa Opportunity Council, Spanish-American Center, Post Office by Constable. The warrant must be posted by February twenty-fifth, 2020, at least seven days prior to March third, 2020 presidential preference primary.
Does the chair have a report?
I do, Mr. President. I would recommend that we accept the election order relative to the presidential primary, March third, 2020, and I will ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
I agree.
Counselor Dabrowski?
I agree.
You heard the unanimous recommendation of ways and means to grant the election order. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Those opposed, the election order is granted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to thirty-three dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thirty-three dash twenty, Diane P. Amadon, renew the secondhand dealer's license for upscale consignment located at 875 Miriam Ave, Suite 131. We do have the applicant information, and we have positive recommendations from the Police Department and the Treasurer and Collector, so my recommendation would be to grant the renewal of the secondhand dealer's license for upscale consignment. And I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Thank you. Counselor Frida?
I support that.
Counselor Dabrowski?
I support it.
You heard the unanimous recommendation of ways and means to grant thirty-three dash twenty. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting thirty-three dash twenty, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, thirty-three twenty is granted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to thirty-four dash twenty.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thirty-four dash twenty, Susan Shalfo Zephyr, renew the secondhand dealer's license for Ginny's Helping Hand, Inc., located at 52 Mechanic Street. Similarly, we have the applicant's information, and we also have positive recommendations from the Police Department, the Treasurer and Collector, so my recommendation would be to grant the renewal of the secondhand dealer's license, and I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
I agree.
Counselor Dabrowski?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of ways and means to grant thirty-four dash twenty. Is there any further discussion? Yes, Counselor-
I'll, just for the record, I will be abstaining from this vote.
Okay. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr has abstained for obvious reasons. That being said, is there any further discussion? The, this will be, thirty-four dash twenty again is unanimously recommended by ways and means. Please, all those in favor, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, thirty-four dash twenty is passed by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to new business and the first reading of an ordinance to the Chair of Legal Affairs.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is petition twenty dash twenty. There is a need to amend this first reading based on recent information or clarification we received from the Police Department, so I'll make a motion to amend petition twenty dash twenty for first reading of the ordinance purposes. Leominster Police Officer requests no parking signs on Priest Street South Side from a point eighty-eight feet east of the intersection with North Main Street, and then easterly for a distance of one hundred fifty-five feet. Also, request no parking on Priest Street North Side between poles number twenty-four and number twenty-five in front of 227 Priest Street. And I'd make that motion.
Okay. Do you have all that? We're going to have, just for the sake of clarity, I'm sorry to do this to-
I can submit this after.
Oh, perfect.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is from the police email.
Very good. Thank you. Do we have a second on the motion? Is Counselor Shalfo Zephyr seconded? Any discussion on the amendment? All those in favor of the amendment, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, the petition is amended by a vote of nine to zero. Do you have a report on the, do you have a report on the amended first reading?
Yes, we'd, my recommendation is to adopt the first reading of the ordinance as amended. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
I'll check with Counselor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yes, absolutely.
Counselor David Cormier?
I have read it, and I finally understand it, so yes, I will, I will go with adopting the first reading of the ordinance.
All right, so you've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to adopt the first reading of the ordinance. Is there any discussion? I just would like to say I'm not sure why we're doing this. Do you, do we, does anybody know? I mean, this parking is like right in front of where the imagination stations-
My understanding is driveways get blocked.
Okay.
Frequently, so that there's a need to have explicit no parking signs.
Okay.
That's my understanding.
All right.
Because of all the events at Doyle Field.
All right, fair enough. Okay, any further discussion? You've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to grant the first reading of the ordinance. You have to do this by roll call though. This will be by roll call vote, starting with Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Fecle?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndt?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I'll be recorded as yay. First reading of the ordinance is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to old business, second reading of the ordinance. Counselor Dabrowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. James Whitney and ten registered voters amend the zoning ordinance to add drive-through to the allowable uses under MU1 zoning, provided the applicant obtains a special permit from the planning board. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes.
Counselor David Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Fecle?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndt?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I'll be recorded as yay. The second reading of the ordinance is adopted by a nine to zero vote. And we have the second reading of an additional ordinance?
Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, David R. Cormier, request a stop sign on South Street against southbound drivers at Tisdale Street. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yes, I'm, I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to adopt the second reading of an ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in, well, that's by roll call though as well, I'm sorry. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Fecle?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndt?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
The second reading of, the adoption of the ordinance is adopted by a nine to zero vote. We have another second reading of an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading of an ordinance, David R. Cormier, request to install a stop sign on South Street against northbound drivers at Crown Street. Again, my recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Fecle?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndt?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
I'll be recorded as yay. Second reading of the ordinance is adopted by a nine to zero vote. And one additional second reading of an ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. President. Second reading of the ordinance, David R. Cormier, request to amend Chapter thirteen, Section thirteen dash seventy-seven stop signs and add the following: Comstock Road against southbound drivers at Union Street, Comstock Road against eastbound drivers at Dugan Drive, Dugan Drive against southeastbound drivers at Union Street, Dugan Drive against westbound drivers at Glenwood Drive. My recommendation is to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. I'd ask you to poll my committee.
Very well. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of legal affairs to adopt the second reading of the ordinance. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is by roll call. Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dabrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Fecle?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndt?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I'll be recorded as yay. The second reading of the ordinance is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. vote of nine to zero. The next matter on the old business is the establishment of a public hearing for loan order, C-79 of 2019, which was the Aeration Basin Project in the amount of $11,294,000. The city clerk has been in discussion with bond counsel over this particular loan order. Historically, the City of Leominster has always published an abbreviated notice when a loan order is proposed and the full notice when the loan order is actually adopted. The bond counsel questioned this. I've read the charter. I believe bond counsel is correct. I believe if you read the charter, namely, Section 3.9(c) under publication for proposed ordinances or loan orders, and (d) publication of adopted loan orders or measures, you'll find that full publication is required for both. So I, I believe that bond counsel is correct. It's a bit hyper technical. The way to correct this is for us to establish a public hearing. And in conjunction with that public hearing, there will be an additional full publication of the proposed loan order. And then we will vote on that. And that'll clear up any deficiency as people, I'm sure all you are aware. Bonds are very tricky business and they have to, you have to comply dot every i and cross every t. So we're going to establish a public hearing on this loan order for when?
February 24, 2020 at 6:45 PM.
Okay.
I believe that'll come before finance.
Okay. And any discussion on the public hearing?
No.
All right. All those in favor of establishing the public hearing on February 24, 2020 at 6:45 PM, please recognize in the usual manner. Those opposed, the public hearing is adopted by a vote of nine to nothing against Counselor Cormier.
If I may, Mr. President, is every, has everything else been checked? Everything else is in order?
Yes.
Everything's okay?
Bond counsel has been in constant communication with the city clerk and I have also assisted. Okay. That leads us to community calendar. Does anybody have, I know the clerk does.
Nope. Do you have any other old business?
Is there any other old business? I suspect that Counselor Frida has some old business.
Yeah, just seeing a million stop signs go through the petitions reminded me that we had stop signs on Jay Avenue and Berry Lane. They're not up yet. Could we check on those?
Sure.
And this council approved all these.
I remember.
A long time ago, I had put in a petition for veteran parking in the city lot. And that's not up yet either, so.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor. Any other old business? Counselor Feckley?
Similarly, last time I looked, the stop signs on Dingly Street, North and South, were not put in and they, they passed the 21.
They're not on ordinance form yet?
Yeah. No, we passed them.
No, it passed.
And it's passed the 21 days and it's probably, yeah. So if you could check on that, maybe they went up within the past week, but I check regularly.
So they, they were passed, but we haven't voted them as ordinancees, right?
No, we did.
We did?
Yep.
And we sent notice to DPW, but.
The signs aren't up. Ah, I see.
The signs are not up. Remind them.
Well, Mr. Bissonette will need to be contacted.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other old business?
You know, Mr. President, I just have, since we're on stop signs and I've.
Stop.
Yeah, I know, I know. By the way, I only have, I only have about like three or four left and I'm, what three is done.
I'm going to, you know, if I happen to.
You can put that on my epitaph, stop, okay?
Stop sign.
But, you know, the Ward Two counselor had mentioned to me about a problem she was having with a stop sign that is on, and I don't mean to steal her thunder, but, you know, it's on French Hill. And we all know French Hill was laid out about 100 and something years ago. So.
That's why it has old pipes too.
Yeah, that's why it has old pipes too, yeah. But, you know, if we were to amend Chapter 13-77, like somebody was to go through, like I did for Ward Three, it's work. Somebody was to go through and fix everything in here that's wrong. We shouldn't have to petition a stop sign here and a stop sign there for streets that have been public streets for 100 years. There's got to be a way that we can go through this and replace this section with a new section and get everything the way it should be and be done with it. I mean, it probably would be cheaper in the long run. You know how much we're spending every time we have to amend a stop sign? So, you know, I think maybe some of the Ward counselors should, should do some work on this and get some data together and we can, we can replace this section with a new section.
I thought you were lobbying for a special committee stop signs are. No?
Sure, I'll do it.
All right.
As long as we don't have to read everything. Can we do that without having to read it all? The entire thing?
No, we, it's, they're ordinances. They have to go through the process. That's the way it is.
So we'd have to read every.
Unless you want, you have to change the charter. That's another, that's another. All right. Any other old business before we move on to the community calendar?
No.
All right. The clerk has a matter for the community calendar important to us all.
I just wanted to let everybody know that on February 12, 2020, at 8:00 PM, our office will be open for the last day to register to vote before the March 3 presidential preference primary election. If you're unable to make it to our office at 8:00 PM, you can also register online until 11:59 PM and you'll qualify for the election.
Okay. Good to know. Anything else in the community calendar?
No.
I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved. I disagree that we have to.